Okay, microphone permitting. We're gonna get started. Good morning and welcome. Thank you for coming. This is a public hearing regarding two proposals. One is to amend Article 43 of the New York City Health Code and the other one to amend Article 47. The notice of intention to amend each of these articles was published in the City Record on March 19. Today's date is April 18 and the time is 10:06 a.m. I'm Diana Zell, Associate General Counsel with the New York City Department of Health and Mental Hygiene. And with me, to my far right, is Assistant Acting Assistant Commissioner Monica Pollak, Acting Assistant Commissioner for the Child Care Division. Next Chanel Bolton, she's a consultant with our Child Care Division. Immediately to my right, Alia Udiri, Director of Policy at the Division of Family and Child Health. Immediately to my left, Dr. Talia Rubin, a consultant with our Oral Health Program. And to my far left, James Morris, our Director of Field Operations and Regulatory Enforcement with our Environmental Health Division. So, the purpose of today's hearing is for everybody who would like to have the opportunity to give us your comments on the proposed rules and for your comments to be available to assist the Board of Health in considering what to do with the proposed rules. So, we take your comments, spoken comments, at this hearing. We also have accepted and are continuing to accept written comments. So, if you decide you don't feel like waiting, you can give us your written comments. The oral comments are transcribed. The Board reads all of them. So whether it's written or spoken, it's considered just the same. So you have your choice. We're asking everyone to keep comments to a maximum of five minutes. The time clock is over there, so you can see how much time you have left. You don't have to go to the full five minutes, but we do ask you to not go over. If you have something else you still want to say, if you talk to your five minutes are up, you can give us a written comment. Written comments are open until the end of the debate today. So, okay, I'm gonna be calling people up to speak. And when I call you, please come up, state your name for the record. Introduce yourself, what organization you're representing, if you're representing an organization, and whether you're speaking in regard to Article 43 or Article 47 or both. So that's basically it. We have so many people here today that we're gonna be using one or more additional rooms with people who I hope can hear me watching on video. We're gonna take breaks periodically, so that people who've already spoken can either... You know, you can certainly leave if you want. Nobody's gonna be offended. Or if you want to continue to hear other comments, we'll ask people who've spoken to go up to one of the other rooms, allow somebody in one of the other rooms to take your spot, so that they'll also have their opportunity to speak. So, okay, that's the deal. And we're gonna call our first speaker Brett Champiner. Are you here?
Yep, Champiner, yeah.
Champiner?
Champiner, yeah.
Sorry, yeah, please forgive me if I mispronounce. Have a seat, yeah.
There we go. Okay. Good morning. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak in regards to, I guess it's Section 43 concerning tooth brushing and training requirements in childcare.
Great.
So, personally, actually, I'm very glad that this is an issue before the City Council for all the children of the Five Boroughs. In my preschool, we actually have lessons on oral care.
Let me just interrupt for a moment. We're the Board of Health, not the City Council.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't want to have any false pretenses here.
No mistake, I'm sorry. Board of Health, students. Yes, we do lessons on oral care in my school. The teachers do demonstrations for the children on how to properly brush their teeth, how long they should do it for. They also talk about what are the good foods to eat and which are the bad foods to eat as well. And even over the last few years, we have had a few dental hygienists from a local office come in, do a demonstration. They give information that the children can take home. They also take toothbrushes. And we've gotten some great feedback from that. In fact, parents always tell us afterwards how much the kids really enjoy showing off to the parents and brushing their teeth at home and being really proud of that. However, I think that there is a huge difference between us promoting this responsibility and mandating by law that preschools have to do it. As I see it, we are leaders of this community and of the city at large. And I would like to know, what type of example are we setting for parents when we take one of the basic responsibilities that they have, of their child and their personal care, and we make it the school's responsibility? I don't think that is our job. What kind of responsibility and example are we setting for parents when we say that this is no longer your responsibility, the schools will take care of it? What type of example are we setting for children that, no, you don't have to worry about doing this at home, the schools will do it for you? Parents are already somewhat not responsible or not accountable for providing lunch and breakfast for some of the schoolchildren on school days, for potty training in early childhood centers, and even for bringing their children into school on time in early childhood centers. I really am very, very, very passionate about personal responsibility on the part of parents, and I want to make sure that this is something that everyone in the community and everyone in the city knows is parents' responsibility to do at home. Not to mention the fact that if it is, that it does become a DOH law, that it's gonna be enforceable by fines and violations and hearings before the tribunal. It's our job to promote good behavior and personal responsibility and accountability, not to take responsibility away from parents, okay? When I told about this proposal to the families in my school, as well as some friends, of course, they mentioned logistical issues, but overall, every one of them said the same thing, to paraphrase, quote, "Why is that your job? What kind of parents can't find five minutes a day to brush their children's teeth?" The logistical issues that they brought up were how we're gonna store them, how long it's gonna take, what type of activities are gonna have to be sacrificed throughout the day in order to accommodate this new requirement. I have prepared remarks as well in regards to the additional training requirements, but I don't wanna go over the time limit, so I'm gonna leave that to my written remarks. But again, I just wanna stress that although I am 100% behind the idea of promoting oral care in schools and in the city at large, I don't think that it is our job to take that responsibility away from parents and enforce it by law. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Andrea Anthony.
I'm gonna try my best to top minutes. Is there any light? Thank you. Good morning. My name is Andrea Anthony and I'm Executive Director of the Daycare Council of New York. We are a membership organization representing 96 nonprofit organizations that operate more than 220 childcare programs in the Five Boroughs of New York City. For 70 years, the Daycare Council member agencies have provided quality early childhood education for our younger citizens. We advocate on their behalf at all levels of government, provide legal relations and mediation services. We operate a professional training institute and we are the lead agency for the childcare resource for all system. As such, we are uniquely positioned to comment on unchanged of Article 47. Before I begin, we appreciate the Department of Health and Mental Health's careful review of Article 47 to clarify and make changes that will improve the service for childcare program staff. In reviewing the proposed amendments, we are highlighting our concerns on certified teacher coverage, the mandatory storage of Epi- auto-injection EpiPens, and a new tooth brushing requirements and procedures. Although there are a number of new amendments related to sheltered childcare, we cannot comment on those provisions primarily because we are not aware of how many daycare council members sponsor those services. Under the proposed changes to Article 47, every childcare program shall designate a certified group teacher as the education director. While requiring the educational director to be certified is an appropriate qualification standard, recruiting or retaining a certified group teacher is an increasingly difficult task for nonprofit community-based organizations that operate childcare programs. The competition between certified teachers being recruited by the City Department of Education and daycare council's member agencies is a major problem, and we foresee no immediate solutions with the exception of salary parity. Daycare Council has repeatedly, has heard repeatedly from our member agencies that they are not able to recruit certified group teachers due to higher salaries and benefits offered by the City Department of Education. A certified group teacher in a public school can make over $13,000 more than their counterparts in community-based childcare programs. After 15 years of service, that salary disparity can be as high as $40,612. This salary disparity has seriously impacted the recruitment retention of certified teachers and education directors when existing teacher or directors terminate or resign. Furthermore, we understand that the new regulations require childcare programs to notify Department of Health and Mental Health in writing within five business days of the separation from the service of educational director. The new regulations do not state how long an agency has to recruit a new certified teacher or education director. Is there a penalty for agencies that do not hire individuals for these positions within 30 days, 60 days, et cetera? Is there an assumption that because an agency must have a certified teacher for every classroom, that an existing teacher can assume the education director position? A mechanism must be developed to assist childcare programs rather than penalize the system due to an exceptionally difficult recruiting environment, period, for nonprofit community childcare programs. A hardship waiver is a realistic procedure to assist community-based programs to address what has become an extremely problematic situation. In 2015, the Daycare Council conducted a survey of its 220 member agencies, which resulted in a response from 169 agencies. Let me skip, don't wanna lose my time. I will comment on the mandate on EpiPens. First, who will assume the cost for this ongoing medical expense? The amendment states that EpiPens must be readily accessible. The mandate to have EpiPens on site without the required medication administration policy is problematic. We view this new mandate as a prime opportunity for New York City to reinforce the importance of staff training on administration medication, however, there are several concerns expressed by our members. The current language states that each permitee shall establish a policy as to whether a program will or will not, that's unclear, provide medication. Where a program has a policy, the DOH should be notified immediately. Furthermore, the new policy states a program shall designate a sufficient number of staff, that's unclear, and will have to have at least one staff trained. Many of our member agencies have expressed concerns about the liability costs that will result in a mandatory policy on the storage of EpiPens. We have also been told from these agencies that they cannot afford to have a nursing center. It would be helpful to hire nurses for a cluster of agencies in a given district. Agencies would report to the nurse the enrolled students that have conditions that require medical attention. Such a service would allow an agency to have a medical professional that periodically checks on the program and who is also at their disposal for emergency care. Having a nurse oversee childcare programs in a given geographic area does not completely resolve the issue of staff untrained in medication administration. If an agency agrees to have EpiPens, they must have a specific number of trained staff based on the capacity. And let me just make our recommendation for that in our notes, so I can... Best practice would...
We weren't really gonna ask you to wrap up. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
We do have a lot of people, but we do have your written comments, and I assure you they will be fully considered. Thank you so much. Okay, Dr. Deborah Weisfuß.
She's not here yet.
She's not here yet?
She's not here yet.
Okay, we'll give her a chance to speak later on. Dr. Joanna Menzelopulu. I apologize if I got that wrong, which I almost certainly did.
Yeah, no, I'm great, okay. She should be here like a minute, but...
Okay, great, don't worry, she's...
I respect you.
We have plenty of other people who'd be happy to speak.
My comments are...
Please introduce yourself first.
Yes, I'm Joanna Menzelopulu. I'm a pediatric dentist, board certified, private practitioner in New York City. And I'm a fellow of the American Academy of Pediatric Dentistry, treasurer of New York County Dental Society, chair of the financial committee of New York County Dental Society, and a delegate of the American Dental Association. I'm speaking, representing the New York County Dental Society here.
Am I guessing correctly, you're here speaking in regard to the dental proposal?
I'm speaking regarding, yes, exactly, exactly. I'm speaking regarding the mandatory tooth brushing that...
Okay, thank you.
So, I'm here to speak in support of the amendment to mandate tooth brushing in childcare programs in family, shelter-based, childhood supervision programs. I've been in private practice, limited to pediatric dentistry since 2002. And my biggest problem that I face practicing is basically establishing a dental home by the age of one, oh, Dr. White is here. So I will definitely give you my personal experience, how it is to try to get the kids actually to brush their teeth. Like, we may think that, you know, I'm a parent, I have a seven-year-old daughter, and I'm a pediatric dentist, and I have to fight with my daughter not to brush her teeth on a daily basis, twice a day. And it wasn't like a very pleasant experience. And a lot of times, you know, you find parents that they need somebody else to actually tell their kids that, you know, this is what you need to do. Like, it's not that I'm saying that, you know, we try to take the responsibility to the parents, but at the same time, we try to help the parents to actually establish certain basic things that they need to happen at home. And it's not because maybe parenting is different nowadays from what it used to be 30 years ago, but I think we need to establish a community, we need to establish a home. That means that we need more than just the parents telling the kids to brush their teeth. By having the daycare centers actually reinforcing or maybe explaining to the kids that you need to brush your teeth before you go to take a nap, it will help the parents with it when they tell them that, you know, you need to brush your teeth before going to bed to reinforce that action that needs to happen. And I feel that in a gentle way, when it happens in a daycare center, for parents that are working, some parents, you know, I'm a working parent, my kid was in daycare from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., you know, it definitely helps a lot to actually have somebody else reinforcing certain messages that you need to give to your kids. One of my main concerns, and I think it's a recommendation, would be to have actually the daycare centers matching with some pediatric dentists or general dentists in the area where the daycare centers are, where they can get actually some consultation. The American Academy of Pediatric Dentistry is actually recommending twice or once a year a visit from a healthcare professional in the facilities to make sure that actually they're doing the right thing. They know what, how to teach the kids to brush their teeth at the age of two, at the age of three, at the age of four. It's a totally different procedure when you have a child who is two, three, four, or five. So you need to have somebody who's a professional to explain how this is done. So I also feel that the New York County Dental Society, we do have a Children's Health Committee that actually has a lot of pediatric dentists involved in the committee, that we would like to get involved and try to help out and match maybe the centers with our members and try to create a collaboration. So, that's it.
Thank you very much. Okay, Dr. Deborah Weisfuß?
Thanks.
Please introduce yourself through the record and tell us if you're speaking in regard to Article 43 or 47 or...
I'm actually following my colleague.
Or maybe both.
Yeah, we're both speaking on the mandatory tooth brushing in the daycare. My name is Dr. Deborah Weisfuß, representing the New York County Dental Society. Been asked by the president there to officially register the unanimous opinion of our Board of Directors in support of this mandatory tooth brushing amendment. Well, my background is varied, and I've had a lot of experience in dental public health, most notable of which is that I've been a past president of the New York State Dental Association, and I'm a trustee of the New York State Dental Foundation. I'm legislative chair of New York County Dental Society and general chair of Give Kids a Smile and New York County 2016, 17, and 18 at the Dental Society. On the national level in dentistry, I'm on the Commission of Dental Accreditation Pre-Doc Review Committee and their committee on annual sessions. I'm fellow of many honorary societies. It's been shown repeatedly in our literature that dental decay, the most common chronic disease of childhood, can be virtually eradicated with behavioral change. But there are obstacles to this happening, and we haven't been that successful in getting that done. It's often found, the most decay is usually found in homes when parents have not been exposed to proper oral hygiene techniques themselves growing up, especially from those new to the U.S., as other countries, you know, believe in different child bearing styles and from indigent backgrounds. The vast majority of decays actually found between the group of 20 to 25% of children, mostly in the low-income households. We have a significant number of these families registered here in our New York City daycare and public school system. And it's been proven many times that even one daily thorough brushing to disrupt the bacterial platformation on the enamel of your teeth will significantly slow or stop the development of tooth decay. It's also clear that dental discomfort and emergencies are significant burden to the families of the kids in question, contributing to loss of school time as well as work time for parents, to say nothing of the pain and suffering until it's all sorted out. It's clear that prevention of these problems will be a welcome contribution to the quality of life of all the families in New York City. In addition, our public health cost reduction and the need for treatment will be considerable, often with severe decay in a young child can only be taken care of with hospital admission, often under general anesthesia. Now, leave it to our Department of Health experts to put a price tag on that for you. Aywana told me earlier this morning that it's one in four children have this baby bottle or nursing decay. The daycare centers will be an excellent starting point to begin establishing this habit of brushing teeth after meal and before sleeping that should be undertaken actually throughout life for optimal oral health. As caregivers interface daily with parents in a detailed way, it's also the opportunity to share the knowledge and gain parental support on this initiative when the kids are not in school, because without parental buy-in to the cavity-free goal, it will most likely fail. However, parent caregiver relationships are often intimate and detailed, and this can easily be accomplished at this stage. In addition, kids often follow the caregiver's direction better than that of their parents when they're home in the evening and they're tired. And I do speak from experience. Three of my four grandchildren have gone to daycare of one kind or another, and the fourth is only a newborn and will be going to daycare when he is eligible. For your information, there is a majority of the states have oral health requirements in their licensing requirements for daycare centers. I assume that's not yet the case in New York State. Many of our professional organizations have recommendations and requirements, standards that can be looked up, that actually apply to home daycare and can be easily applied. I will leave it to my colleague, Aywana, Dr. Menzelopulu, to, you know, be able to share you more detailed insight into these regulations and setups. The main reason, though, that I'm here with you today is I've had the opportunity for the last three years to be general chair of a program called Give Kids a Smile, New York City, that is, we are operating for New York County Dental Society. Joining us for the last three years, our honorary chair for all of this has been Mr. Corey Johnson, formerly chair of the New York City Health Committee, that's how I met him. Now, many of you may know him as Speaker of the City Council, and he's still our honorary chair. When I went over certain things that we could implement, the Dental Society could interface with the community better, he picked Give Kids a Smile as his choice of things that he thought was the most important thing for us to set up within the New York City school system. With Mr. Johnson's support, I navigated through the complexities of the New York City Department of Health, under the expert guidance of Ms. Ramnik Kalra of Oral Health, as well as the Department of Education and their legal department, to craft a program that offers screening and fluoride treatments once a year to lower school children from pre-k to third grade. Sorry, I'll just really rush.
I'm gonna really have to ask you to wrap up, I'm sorry.
Okay, the key thing I wanna tell you is our data from this year. The data from this year began with us sending out 1,053 consent forms. 759 positive responses came back after much ado. We found 41% of the children screened on that day needed to be referred for routine dental care, and an additional 70% were referred for urgent care, with a total of 58% of the children that we screened referred for further care.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm sorry I'm gonna have to cut you off.
No problem. I just wanna sort out, the national average for this is only 31%.
Okay, thank you. And I'm also, I'm gonna remind everybody, we do take your written comments, whatever you don't get to say orally, we will consider and...
That I feel is just the most important.
Thank you very, very much.
I think you made a great comment, too. Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Okay, our next speaker will be Elaine Short, if you're here.
Yes, I am.
Great.
I'm speaking in regard to Article 47, and I'm from the Lucero's Daycare Center. Your time and me, she got over, she got like two minutes over. So...
She didn't get a full two minutes over, but I did forget.
She spoke on the other time, but you're taking my time away from me right now. So I'm with the Lucero's Daycare Center for Rockaway Princes, and I have a couple of issues for the staff-child ratio. I was concerned because it was cleared by the commissioner in 2015 that y'all had increased the class size from 15 to 17. So I'm a little concerned, why did you take it back? You know, because now it's at 15 again, when it was increased to 17. So if that's something y'all can look at in the records and maybe go back to the 17 students. And I have a copy from the commissioner when it was done, okay, if you wanted to look at it. And also, the training requirements for all teaching staff that used to be for the assistant teachers, so are y'all gonna increase and give us fundings, because we have to pay for these trainings? If you take a CPR class, that's $75 per person, not to mention the med- medication administration training, that runs up like to $250. So we have to have these set requirements. I do believe that y'all gotta look for some type of funding. And also, I'm a little confused with the EpiPen injector, because you want us to keep two randomly pens on site for a child. Those pens run between $300 to $500.
Seven hundred.
And... Okay, so it's even higher. And I'm not sure of how it's done, I'm not a doctor, but aren't those things set up according to the specific child, like the child's weight or whatever, if you're allergic to peanuts or if you're allergic to a bee sting? So how can I just randomly keep something and give it to someone, you know, because the pen have to give you consent if their child is allergic to certain things? So that really wasn't made too clear, so I'm a little confused with that. Okay, and that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, our... Our next speaker is Joseph Rosenberg, and our following two speakers will be Kim Von Adah and Jacob Adler. I'm announcing that, so in case the next speakers are in the other room, this would be a good time to come to this room. But if people miss their call, they will have another opportunity. Okay.
Okay, great. Good morning, I'm Joseph Rosenberg. I'm the Executive Director of the Capital Community Relations Council. I represent the Archdiocese of New York and the Diocese of Brooklyn on local legislative and policy issues. I'm testifying today regarding DOH and H proposed... I'm testifying today regarding DOHMH proposed rules that amend Article 43 of the New York City Health Code. The safety and welfare of children in New York City is a priority for all of us, including, of course, the administrators, teachers, and dedicated staff at the schools of the Archdiocese of New York and the Diocese of Brooklyn. Over 95,000 students attend Catholic school in New York City. The Catholic school see over 11% of the pre-k and pre-k students in New York City. The health of our students is paramount, and we support the intent of the proposed rules to provide emergency systems in the event of severe allergic reactions. Nevertheless, we have great concerns about the true effectiveness, and we are greatly troubled by the burden that will be placed on our principals, teachers, and staffs. Section 4321(c) of the proposed rules enacts emergency care procedures, specifically maintenance, regulation, administration, and disposal of epinephrine auto-injectors. It is undisputed that the use of auto-injectors can offset and relieve severe allergic reactions and anaphylactic shock. The proposed rules require that a principal, quote, designate a sufficient number of staff, end quote, on the premises on how to recognize severe allergic reactions in students, as well as to administer, store, maintain, control, or dispose epinephrine auto-injectors. Medical emergencies where students suffer severe allergic reactions and possible anaphylactic shock should be responded to with medical health professionals, not school staff, regardless of the amount of training the latter might receive. In the public schools in New York City, a nurse is always on hand to respond to any possible emergency that might require the use of an epinephrine auto-injector. This is also the case with non-public schools that have student enrollments of 200 or more, with this policy being established by the city of New York and the nurses paid for by the city of New York. Such a policy ostensibly focuses on the health of students in our city, but it sure changes the health of students in non-public schools where the enrollment is under 200 students. Nurses should be provided for all schools in New York City by the city of New York, regardless of the school's enrollment and whether or not they are public and non-public schools. It is a matter of safety and in the case of anaphylactic shock, possible life or death. Having a principal or teacher trained might be of help in certain instances, but it does not go far enough to protect the students. Entrusting the diagnosis of an emergency condition to termination whether to administer medication, the oversight, storage, and management of these medications, and authenticating its efficacy must be left to trained medical professionals and not trained educators. We contend that the Department of Education and DOHMH institutionalize this commitment to the health of school-aged children by supporting and equipping all schools, public and non-public school nurses paid for by the city. This would be the best way to truly respond to possible medical emergencies facing school-aged children. We also question if DOHMH has the legal authority to mandate this medical responsibility upon educationally-trained staff. This proposed rule inserts requirements that are generally delegated to bargain contractual negotiations between school administrators and their employees. The mandate also raises insurance issues that might result in schools having difficulty obtaining sufficient liability coverage. These last two points further support the inappropriateness of this proposed mandate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next speaker, Kim Van Ada. And next up after that will be Dr. Jacob Adler and Dr. Lisa Naum.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Kim Van Ada, and I'm here regarding the epinephrine auto-injector issue. And I'm here basically to ask that the Department of Health reconsider that mandate. For the past 15 years, I've served as a health consultant for childcare programs in all five boroughs, both private and public. I also was the health consultant for the City of New York ACS Division of Early Child Care and Education, their early learning programs, I'm also a former math trainer, a current CPR instructor, and I've trained approximately 900 childcare providers in the administration of epinephrine auto-injectors and asthma rescue medications. And I've worked with many families of children with allergies as well as program staff, and understand its complexity. Keeping our children safe is our primary mission, this amendment does not do that. Instead, I urge Department of Health to incorporate the section of the New York State Public Health Law 3000(c) that allows programs to have non-child-specific epinephrine auto-injectors on site, to be able to do so, but does not mandate them. Simply changing the word "shall" in the proposed 4729(c) one to "may" would solve most of the problems with this amendment. In addition, I urge, I've been urging for the last three or four years, Department of Health to incorporate the New York State Office of Family, Children and Family Services Regulations on Emergency Medication Administration. These regulations exempt emergency medications from Math certification requirements, and thus would help ensure that children who needed these medications would have them available. In other words, instead of mandating stock epinephrine auto-injectors, I would argue that our focus should be on ensuring children who already have these devices prescribed be able to have them in the program and staff know how to use them. Current Department of Health regulations discourage this, and more specifics are in my written remarks. In limited time, I want to speak directly to some of the issues. The amendments are both burdensome, burdensome? And unlikely to be effective. Obviously, somebody mentioned cost, and the cost is insane. The other thing I want to point out is that EpiPens, which are the most common things, are very badly designed devices, right? They're not as easy to use as the company contends or as laypeople believe. In a 2015 studies, I have the reference in the written comments, only 16% of those who had been prescribed an EpiPen knew how to use it correctly. And these were adults, including parents of children with significant allergies. So, the likelihood of stock EpiPens being administered correctly by non-health professionals in a childcare setting is not high. Next thing is recognizing symptoms in a child with already diagnosed allergies is challenging for many staff. The likelihood of doing so in an undiagnosed child is questionable at best. And I'm gonna quote here from the Annals of Allergy, Asthma, and Immunology in August 2017. That is a good journal. Multiple studies have observed knowledge deficits and delays in recognition of anaphylaxis among emergency medical personnel, teachers, and even healthcare professionals. Survey research has shown poor understanding of indications for the use of epinephrine among families with food-allergic children, school nurses, and emergency responders, I'm sorry. So, expect then everybody to be able to recognize this, I think is going a bit far. I think that it is more appropriate to emphasize the importance of calling 911 for any significant symptoms, regardless of the child's diagnosis. Obviously, the question is who's gonna prescribe it, what pharmacy is going to supply this? Who's going to provide the training? And when and how will programs with limited funds and even more limited time available for training be able to reasonably receive this training? Other things, in my career, I've learned that this kind of training needs to be ongoing, meaning that I have found it most successful, what I call a train-to-trainer model, in which someone on staff is knowledgeable enough to be able to review every time a child comes in needing the medicine, to go through it with the staff. One-time trainings doesn't work. By the way, I go around, I look at lots of classrooms and programs, I've seen expired medications, I even saw accidental self-injections, medicines locked in cabinets, missing consents, incorrect demonstration of technique, almost always. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Dr. Jacob Adler, and our next couple of speakers will be Lisa Naum and Beth Klein.
Good morning, thank you for allowing me to testify. My name is Jake Adler, I am the policy director for the Orthodox Union. We represent non-public schools throughout New York State. I just want to correct the record, I am in no way a doctor, I don't want anyone...
I apologize for that.
It's a compliment, so, yeah. I will not take my four minutes and 43 seconds, I'll just briefly summarize our concerns. Number one, we appreciate everything the Department of Health does for the city and for the children of the city, and we appreciate the concern that's put into this hearing. When we're getting into Article 43 and new procedures, new training, new requirements on daycares in schools that operate daycares, my view is, our view is that this is a unfunded mandate on our non-public schools, as Mr. Rosenberg so aptly put. Who's gonna train these people, who is funding the training? So, we have concerns there. I think their, a first step at enhancing school health, certainly in non-public schools, but really across the board, would be to have a greater dialogue with the schools that are already here, talk about the options and the training that's already available to them, talk about the laws that already apply to them, educational law 911, which may or may not apply in the city in the same way, but there are different assets, I think, that the city and state already deploy for these schools and for these students, and I don't think these schools are, know enough about them or have enough resources to really focus on them. So, I think if the Department remains concerned and effort to kind of get more information, get more collaboration out there, that would go a long way. The other item I bring up is the same thing that Mr. Rosenberg brought up, is the full-time nursing requirement or threshold. As he mentioned, larger non-public schools, and certainly all public schools, have full-time nurses, whereas smaller non-public schools do not. I think if the Department would look at that threshold more closely, I think there's a way to kind of kill the bird with two birds with one stone and save some money and certainly save a lot of kids and benefit public health. And with that, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Lisa Naum is our next speaker, followed by Beth Klein and Sudamani Gajil.
Hello, my name is Lisa Naum. Me, I'm Michael Reddick, I'm a concierge in Barzah Hospital.
Right. Beth Klein?
Yeah. And I'm...
Are you, are you, three of you are planning to share about that?
Yeah, I guess that...
Okay, in that case, if you could all introduce yourselves, please.
Yeah.
My name is Beth Klein.
I'm Sudamani Gajil. We come from South Bronx, in Barzah Hospital. We would like to address about the tooth brushing. We believe that the amendment can promote the partnership between the teachers and our parents, because brushing is critical part of our, in provincial careys, however...
Excuse me, I've just been, I've just been informed that people, people in the other room could use some more volume, so if you could please speak loudly and into the microphone, that would be helpful, thank you.
And I would also ask, if you have finished speaking, because this is, we're having major technical issues, and there are people on the 10th floor having a very hard time hearing, and some of them want to speak as well. If you would finish speaking, if we could switch rooms so that you can come up to the 10th floor and they could come down to the 8th floor, that would greatly appreciate it. So, if you could please do that, I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay. Okay, we'll continue and give you, give you an extra 20 seconds or so.
Sure. So, we believe that it is, it is a good amendment, because we do want to promote brushing, which is a component in preventing caries. However, it is a multifactorial disease, so at least we can address one part, we can maybe prevent caries. However, it should be coordination between parents and teachers, and also the dental professionals, because we recommend brushing twice a day, once in the morning and once at nighttime. And often, we do, if there's a choice, we do emphasize the nighttime brushing more, because that's when the food residue remain in the mouth and we have decreasing saliva flow. So, overnight time, that actually people are more susceptible to heavy caries. So, because of that reason, it would be critical for the, it's not the responsibility of teachers and getting them brushed just at the daycare, but really getting them message of process of parents so they can follow through and promote their oral hygiene practice at home. Thank you. A lot of that's also important, because in, a lot of parents are single parents or there's another guardian taking care of the child, and putting multiple siblings ready for school in the morning can be a very time-consuming activity. In school, if it's a pure organized situation where all the friends are brushing together, kids are more likely to do it, and you can actually spend the kind of time that's necessary to get a good tooth brushing in, and we recommend two minutes. There is techniques like previous doctor mentioned, it's important to take your time and have it be supervised. Children under the age of six should not really be brushing without supervision, they should not be brushing on their own. So, you do need a teacher or guardian, somebody helping them out. So, having it be an activity at school where everyone's kind of doing it together can be very beneficial, and emphasizing what Dr. Naum said, it's not taking away responsibility from the parents, but it's setting up a community oral health initiative where the teachers are doing a part of it, the parents are doing a part of it at home, and the medical, any other medical professionals involved in that child's life is also responsible for reinforcing the same message. I would just like to add, that I recognize for the caretakers in the schools, this would be something that would be a little bit difficult to add into a daily routine. But it's something that, like my colleagues are sharing, it's something that we'd like to see a practice, a behavior that we would like to encourage them to start at an early age, because as long, if the follow-up isn't carried over through at home, we see a lot of these children coming in with large cavities, large abscesses. This isn't something normal. This is not something that we should see on a day-to-day basis. However, in our profession, unfortunately, we're seeing a significant part of our population coming in, so we'd like to try to, like they were suggesting, incorporate the teachers helping the children get into this community or start this practice, that hopefully will be something carried on into the home and throughout their life. We do recognize that it is tricky, and it would take away, it would be a challenge to integrate this into the daily routine of the studies and other programs that you have. We would strongly encourage this as a step to improve more wellness, better health overall in our children. Final thing, caries, yeah. Final thing, caries is the biggest thing that children are missing in school days. So, if it's something that can be prevented in school, it does for the long-term health of our education and school attendance. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Okay, our next speaker will be Yevgenia Bartasnik, followed by Pauline Cornelian and Teresa Di Maggio. Okay, is Yev, Yevgenia?
Yeah, I'm here, I'm here.
Oh, okay, so, so you don't want to speak?
No.
Okay, okay, you're, you're welcome.
Then, the restaurant here, they're gonna make it.
Oh, okay, thank you very much. Okay, our next speaker then will be Stacy White, if you'd like to speak, followed by Louise Lee and Carrie Johnson. And I'm gonna remind you, please speak up and into the mic, close to the microphone, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Stacy White, I am a pediatric nurse, I'm a pediatric nurse for over 31 years. I am also a Math trainer, so I've been trained by the New York State Professional Development Program in how to do Math. I'm also a childcare health consultant for over 50 programs here in the city of New York. As a health consultant, part of my job is to also train childcare providers in emergency medications. In 2016, as is noted in this proposal, that the New York State has allowed programs such as daycare centers to have on hand epinephrine, stock epinephrine. However, according to the training that I provide, that I was trained to do with the New York State Department of Health, the Office of Children and Family Services, one of the things that has been asked is that, one, that the prescription for the EpiPen has to come from a healthcare practitioner as well, or a pharmacist. I don't know any healthcare practitioner who will voluntarily go and write a script for a childcare program that they do not know if those who are in the program have been thoroughly trained in how to administer this medication. You're asking a healthcare practitioner to put their license on the line, which I don't know if is a feasible request. The second concern that I have is that according to the training that I received from the Office of Children and Family Services in how to administer emergency medications, primarily the EpiPen, is that you have to have both doses. There's a dosage for children, which is .15 milligrams, and this is for children who are up to the, anywhere from 33 pounds to 66 pounds. Once they get over 66 pounds, then you're required to administer the adult version of the epinephrine auto-injector, which is .30 milligrams. This would entail that a program will now need to know, would have a program... would have a program in place, that they are weighing these children on a regular basis in order for them to know, did this, is this child going to receive the junior version or the adult version, adult dosage of the epinephrine? In order to accomplish that now, we're asking childcare providers either to be on an every-two-week basis or a monthly basis for them to incorporate this into their program. That is not a reasonable request. You may have a child who enters school, let's say in September, and in September, they're weighing 56 pounds. Now you're here in April, May, and they've gone up to 70 pounds. They're on two different dosages. Also, what you're saying is that if the program did decide to implement this, that would mean that they would have to have a log. And at the same time, while this child is exhibiting their anaphylactic, um, symptoms, they would have to now pull out that log, look for the child's name, and say, "Okay, I weighed you back in March, and in March you are this weight. Therefore, I'm going to administer the, whichever dosage it may be." We're asking our childcare, um, providers to become doctors in a sense. It is the doctor who makes that decision if a child is going to receive the junior version or the adult version. Simply because a child is over 66 pounds does not mean that they're going to get the adult version if their doctor says that they recommend that they have the junior version. We're asking them to now become healthcare practitioners. And I have a serious concern with that. So I would like for the Department of Health, the Health Department, to reconsider if that should be a mandate that now we're requiring that childcare providers have on hand two dosages, regardless of the price, because mine does have, so everyone knows, they are willing to supply those who are in low-income, um, school districts with free dosages of the, um, epinephrine. But, at the same time, my concern is, are, why give that responsibility to childcare providers? They're having enough problems trying to deal with children on educational matters. Now it's giving them this responsibility to be healthcare practitioners. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is going to be Louise Lee, followed by Carrie Johnson. Louise Lee, are you here? Okay, we're going to move on to Carrie Johnson.
Hello, my name is Carrie Johnson, and I'm with, I'm representing today Open House Nursery School. We are a private preschool and childcare provider located in Cobble Hill in Brooklyn. We've been providing early childhood education for nearly 50 years.
Can I ask you to please speak, speak a little louder?
It's interesting, it sounds very loud.
Unfortunately, I've been informed that's not the case in the other area.
Right, I saw that, okay. So, uh, I wanted to thank the Department of Health for its concern for children in New York. And, uh, of the three main changes proposed to Article 47, we appreciate the training, extending the training from assistant teachers to regular teachers. Because part of the practice of being an early childhood educator is always revisiting your training and re, uh, improving your skills. Uh, we are very concerned about the EpiPen, uh, regulation for the reasons mentioned here. We are not comfortable, even though our executive director has M.A.T. training, making that kind of evaluation, especially in a child who hasn't been diagnosed. Uh, it makes us very nervous indeed that we would be responsible for administering medication to a child that hasn't been diagnosed and deciding, oh, this is an emergency, it requires that sort of effort. Um, the other thing is, everybody's pretty alarmed about the tooth brushing thing. And I appreciate what the previous speaker said about the need to limit and prevent caries in children. But a two-minute tooth brushing in a classroom of 15 three-year-olds? I don't know if you've ever tried to brush a three-year-old's teeth. Um, it's going to take more than two minutes. It's going to require one-on-one assistance. As they said, it needs to be assisted. And what are, what is happening in the classroom while this is going on? You have two teachers, you have a teacher and an assistant teacher. You have a three-year-old who does not want his teeth brushed, chances are. It's very intimate to stick your, you know, a toothbrush in a child's mouth. They don't like it, a lot of them don't like it. So now, what are we, five minutes a child? Seven minutes a child? This time has to come from somewhere. It comes out of the classroom, it comes out of adult attention to the children. So, then there's this question of storage, there's the question of training. This is also time that comes out of the classroom. This is money paid for training somewhere, to somebody, out of somebody's budget. We're a relatively high-income neighborhood, but the consequence of that is that our parents pay a lot of money already. And that money largely goes out the door to our staff who have to live in New York. So, you know, the money is coming from somewhere, the time is coming from somewhere. These are not infinite resources. Space is an issue, in New York City, space is an issue. Where are we storing these cups labeled "at a safe distance"? You know, um, it, all of that is a factor. One of our staff is a special education provider who, uh, does speech therapy. And as part of it, sometimes she does brush children's teeth, because that can be part of an IEP. And she was like, ugh, you know, 20 minutes was her estimate for a child with special needs. We are a de facto inclusion school, some of our children have IEPs, a lot of them are on the autistic spectrum. It's not going to be two minutes. It's not going to be two minutes, there's the, the washing, the putting toothpaste on the wax paper, which, you know, I understand the purpose of it, all of it, you know, and then the logging. So it's a lot to place on childcare providers. It seems to me that there are other ways to try to come at these schools and that ultimately, the goal really is that this is a practice in a household. And that there are ways to think about broader programs where you're bringing, training dental hygienists into schools to train children, to train parents, to provide voluntary opportunities. Part of the issue is that there aren't enough dental hygienists to go around and there aren't enough dentists to take Medicaid for low-income children who really need these services. And that looking at those bigger issues is a better way to address this rather than asking daycare providers. And, you know, some of them can be pretty small places where you really have two adults, two 15 or 18 children who require assistance with teeth brushing. It's a lot. I thank you very much for your time and for listening today.
Okay, we're going to take a two-minute break. I need to get an update on the list of speakers. We'll, we'll resume in a couple of minutes.
And instead monetary violations will be issued and the summonses say anywhere from $200 to $2,000. There's no specificity about what each particular violation would cost. There's nowhere that it's listed, none of us could find it anywhere. Um, and if, if this is going to be the practice going forward, we would like to know how we know that. Um, the other thing is, we would respectfully request that you reconsider this and instead provide us with the opportunity like we had in the past to fix or cure something that's not a critical violation. As I said, a light bulb goes out overnight, we come in, we call our maintenance staff immediately and, and they come and fix it. But if in the meantime you've come, we can't do anything about it. Um, if, before, and this was not to me, this was another, it was a colleague at another school, said that somebody didn't have their updated medical form, that they had gone to the physician. In the past, you could call your doctor and they could fax it over. And they said, "No, the person's still got a violation." Um, we want to work in a very collegial format with you. It's very important to us that we do the right thing for our schools and our children. We don't just report to our parents. We, I report to a, a church, to a rector in charge, and to a DLO. Other people have private schools where they have their own boards. Um, we need to tell them what the requirements are. Where are the regs that are going to say, what's going to list each violation, what the cost is, and if there's any possibility to cure prior to the fine being, um, levied? As one of the prior speakers noted, we're, we're small. I mean, we, we're not, we're not-for-profit, we're not making money on this. We pay our salaries to our teachers. And every time something like this, a fine comes, that's less money that I have to buy a book or, or to do something, you know, for my staff. So, my request to the board here today is, if you would please reconsider this subsection and, and let us have a time to cure. And if not, could you at least provide us with a list of where the fines are for each individual, um, violation that we will have? Thank you so much for your time, I greatly appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay, our next, our next speaker is Tomer Rowe, followed by Lydia Spinelli and Lindsay Bennett.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to be here. Um, it's really important that you hear from the stakeholders in all this. And I'll just echo, I'm, I'm here from the Rockefeller University Child and Family Center, so we're a, a 15-classroom campus childcare year-round. And I just want to echo what Mary Caron said, that we truly believe in best practice. And we do our best to provide that in terms of educating children and following, um, the regulations. But the regulations proposed right now and as being implemented can often seem quite arbitrary, so...
I'm sorry, could you say, are you addressing Article 43?
Yes, this is Article 47. Sorry, Article 47. And I am particularly concerned about, um, what seems to be unfunded mandates and rather arbitrary enforcement of the regulations. So we're having a lot more inspections. And, um, in this last section that Mary Caron referenced, instead of having a, a window, a grace period, which to correct a non-critical violation, um, now it's almost like getting a parking ticket, as some schools have described, that you get the violation, a fine is immediately levied, you have no opportunity to correct it. Um, which is very contrary to past practice in which we felt there was a very collaborative relationship between the consultants and the sanitarians. And we all felt like we were working to provide the best possible care for children. And now it feels like a game of gotcha, sometimes. And the Department of Buildings, the Department of Health, and the Fire Department have sometimes contradictory regulations. And it can be very hard to know who, what to do to be in compliance, because we can get some contradictory, um, demands placed upon us. I would give an example of, uh, I think, an arbitrary interpretation of the code that we did not get cited on, but we could have. Our sanitarian at one point told us that, um, the bathrooms, the children's bathrooms cannot be used to diaper a child while another child is using the potty, because that is an adult use of the bathroom, rather than an exclusive child use of the bathroom. Anybody who works with young children knows that there is a continuum of toilet learning. And it is important for children in diapers to be exposed to the toilets and the potty game. And even a child who uses the potty sometimes still doesn't wear any diaper. So we didn't get cited, but that to me was completely, and I was trying to explain to him the section of Article 47 in which the exclusive use of facilities for children is described, and he had a completely arbitrary interpretation of that. And no, we didn't get a fine, but we could have. And that just doesn't make any sense, and that is not helping, um, teachers or children. So, um, that's a concern. And, um, I know there are a lot of schools that are, just can't afford to take the time off to have the director go to a hearing to appeal a fine. Um, and my understanding, this is not a private versus a public, uh, issue. This is happening, what we're experiencing as private programs is also happening in publicly funded pre-K programs. And many of those schools haven't even the resources to deal with this. So I think that there's, um, we just want to ensure that we're working in partnership together with the Department of Health and we are not being what can feel like unfairly targeted. So we would wish that the investment that the Department of Health makes would be in supporting us and providing additional training as needed and staff development, rather than focusing solely on enforcement inspections and court gates. Um, and there's another issue in that sometimes the changes in Article 47 are not uniformly and transparently shared. Um, in organization networks that I'm a part of, it seems that sometimes, some directors get information from the Department of Health, but other directors don't. So we're not all operating with, um, the same level of shared information. And that can be troubling in terms of being compliant with the law. So, um, and I would also say that, from a practical point of view, I echo the concerns of, uh, other providers that have spoken about tooth brushing and just how burdensome it will be to do that in a large classroom of children. I think it's important to work with parents and to help providers, but it does feel like it's placing undue burden on the teachers to do that. And then it's just a whole other range of things we could be cited for, for non-compliance. If the toothbrushers are touching each other. You know, you could get a citation for that. And, and we don't have facility, we're, we're working with, you know, barebones budgets and often, uh, very limited facilities. And so that just seems like it's going to just open a can of worms in terms of other potential fines that can be applied to us. And I agree with the EpiPen, uh, concerns as well, that it seems like a very well-intentioned goal, but probably, in implementation, may not actually be evidence-based and, um, could create a lot of unintended consequences. So, um, I would urge just the Department of Health not to mandate EpiPens. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Okay, Lydia Spinelli will be followed by Lindsay Bennett and Johanna Cunningham.
Thank you so much. Uh, we too, oh, I'm director of the Brick Church School in Manhattan. And we too care deeply about the health and safety of children. And I've always had a wonderful relationship with our consultant because she recognizes us as a fine program and appreciates all we're doing. And I have not yet experienced what my colleagues have. But we attended a meeting yesterday where everyone is up in arms about these fines. And this proposed Amendment 47.77, even though it's an amendment, is already being, being enforced, which I don't understand. So many of my colleagues are complaining about getting fines for things that don't even seem to be in Article 47 currently. For instance, one school that is housed in a synagogue was closed. And the sanitarian came in and looked in the refrigerator and saw a little bit of juice spilled, which had been done by the, the synagogue, and they were fined. I mean, there, there are just ridiculous things going on that seem like the Health Department is not caring about quality education and health and safety. So, uh, we used to have, you know, an inspector would come in and say, "Oh, this little thing is wrong, you know, we'll come back and check it, or you send us proof that it's checked." But the fines are really burdensome to some of our schools, and it really isn't fair. One other comment on tooth brushing. Uh, many of our children only attend three hours a day. That is very different from a daycare program that's eight to six. And to suggest that we should be brushing teeth when they're only there for three hours, I don't think any of us brush our teeth every three hours. So, it really seems to be an undue burden, and I think there's more danger of children sharing toothbrushes and spreading germs. I just don't think it makes sense. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next speaker, Lindsay Bennett, followed by Johanna Cunningham and David Niederman.
Hi, I'm Lindsay Bennett. I'm the director of the Synagogue of the United Nations Nursery School. I have always had a phenomenal relationship with the Department of Health. Uh, Ms. Pollak, you and I have worked together in the past. I haven't had the problems that some of my, I was at the same meeting yesterday. I have not had the same problems that some of my colleagues have had as recent. One of the great concerns for me is hearing from colleagues of the, the problems they're having and that things aren't clearly documented for us right now. You know, in reading over the code, um, all 116 pages and seeing, you know, Article 47.77, um, paragraph 6I, there it is basically telling us that at any point, Department of Health can basically, um, state that something has changed. And that's how it's starting to feel to us as directors. I know as I set my budget for the incoming school year, I took out materials and things that I planned to do in the classroom for the well-being of our children. I took out staff developments for my parents, because I am concerned about the fines that we could possibly get for something that I worked so hard... we could possibly get for something that I worked so hard every day to do, and I'm not even aware of. So I feel like what's happening in our classrooms is changing as a result of the codes that are being put in place. I feel for us, if we can have a list of violations and fines, we can better work together with you to follow what you're doing and to effectively meet the needs of our children. And separately, in regards to both the EpiPen and the tooth brushing, it comes back to the finances. That's something else that, looking ahead, you know, it's not clearly stated, if we're getting an EpiPen for the school, it's not going on somebody's insurance. We've all read in the papers about the balloon skyrocket rates of EpiPens that has been increasingly going up. That's money that's coming out of what's in a pre-K or two spots room in my school, because I don't have that money to put towards it. So right now, that's all on hold. In regards to tooth brushing, we are trying to attract high-quality teachers to prepare our children for the next steps. Many of them read the article in the New York Post about tooth brushing. It's a concern to all of us. We are meeting increasing needs of children in the classroom. Teachers are having increasing demands to meet the needs. I know one of the policies in here is constant inline vision of the children in our classrooms. If you're taking a teacher out to deal one-on-one with a child, how are we going to continue to be able to follow every other guideline that is in Article 47? So again, we want to work together. We want to continue to have the relationship. I think we just need more clarity. I know for me, reading through this, I'm not a lawyer, I'm an early childhood educator. I had to read through this 15 times just to be able to speak today. And I'm probably not even understanding everything in its entirety. You sent out a few years ago an amazing book, that was this little blue book that I use as my bible, that kind of describes everything. When we had a recent visit and I was talking to our sanitarian, that's not even the most updated anymore. So even having something like that, that clearly describes each of us, the same mandates and the same guidelines, can help us continue to comply effectively. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Our next speaker is Johanna Cunningham, followed by David Niederman and Patricia Poe.
Pell.
Johanna Cunningham, are you here? All right, we'll move on for the moment. Our next speaker is David Niederman.
When will you stop speaking?
Not yet, not until you sit down. Okay.
Good morning. Thank you very much for allowing us this opportunity to speak. My name is Rabbi David Niederman. I'm the president of the United Jewish Organization So Williamsburg, and or Brooklyn, representing yeshiva schools in the Williamsburg area. About 2,240 preschool children between the age of three and five are enrolled in our childcare programs operated by the yeshivas, and will be affected by the proposed amendments. At least 80% of the students reside in low-income residence. Ten years ago, we worked very closely with the Department of Health, former Commissioner Freedman, in developing the Article 43 regulations. And I'm thankful to the department, because it really works wonderful. And we work closely with the schools and for the well-being of our children. I'm now here to oppose the amendment in front of you to require the daily tooth brushing. This runs contrary to the spirit of Article 43, which focuses only on health and safety issues, not on curriculum and educational programming. While we share the department's goal to promote good dental care and hygiene, we are opposed to implementing these new requirements in a school setting. Because, A, while brushing above a table in groups may work in smaller programs, implementing them in larger school settings is a recipe for spreading germs and infections, as stated before. Unlike smaller centers, as school-based programs, the sinks are often across the hallway. Hence, after brushing the teeth, the children will have to leave to work to the sink in order to rinse their mouth and clean their brushes. This increases the likelihood of transferring fluids and germs from child to child. B, the additional cost of the school's strained budgets, much of whom struggle on a daily basis, to cover the rising cost of operating these programs, may eventually have to pass on that to the parents, who might, who are overwhelmingly low-income. C, while we appreciate the department's role in ensuring the safety and well-being of children, this proposal creates a precedent of government-regulating private program curriculum. The UJ has collaborated with the Department of Health for many years to combat outbreaks of shigala, measles, chickenpox, reduced lead poisoning rates, et cetera, and to promote healthy eating and living among children, adults, and seniors. We strongly believe that tooth brushing ought to be the primary responsibility of the families. Schools can play a role, an important role, with the rising awareness of the importance of daily brushing, both for the parents and the children. We stand ready, willing, and able to work with you to promote health, oral care, and hygiene. However, this proposal is a big and onerous leap from educating students to a mandatory, impractical requirement presenting health and other challenges. I respectfully ask not to enact this proposal, eliminate the burden of overburdened school programs, and to the very least, please postpone this enactment until the schools, community, and everybody involved in daycare programs have a meaningful dialogue and input. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Patricia Poe. Are you here?
Pell.
Pell, excuse me.
Sorry, bad writing.
Followed by Denise Cordovano and Ronnie Moskowitz.
Thank you for this opportunity today. I feel that we're in a very collegial environment, and I think that in that spirit, that's what I would like to speak to. Many of you have been very eloquent about the reasons for or opposed to these newer regulations. I only want to reinforce some of those voices. I'm Patricia Pell. I'm the executive director of Roseville Island Day Nursery. We have an infant toddler program, 30 children, in care year-round, from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., most of them. We also have a nursery school, and our nursery school now includes two universal pre-K classes. So we are serving a broad population of families and ages of children across the spectrum of Roseville Island, which is quite an international population. I would like to speak to the increasing burdens of small programs. The rabbi was very eloquent about the problems of larger programs. I think we, small schools, we have a total of 100 children in our care, have increasing administrative bureaucratic mandates to meet. And they do seem to change arbitrarily, without notification. I was grateful that everything is spelled out in this, in terms of the proposed changes to these articles, because I feel like sometimes just being out of the loop of knowing can cause a big problem. As Lydia said formally, we were used to working with consultants who would say, they would come in frequently and say, okay, here's something I want you to take care of. And we would take care of it. We are doing this because we believe in education of young children. We believe in partnering with parents to help them be the best parents they possibly can be. They trust us to provide good educational care. The more time we spend on these things that don't seem to properly belong in educational care, the less we can do other things. Universal pre-K, we already have to have 47 minutes of active physical engagement. We have to have a certain number of minutes of educational instruction, direct instruction. So we're already kind of in timeframes of getting many, many things done. And it's becoming ever more burdensome for us. Kim Van Ades spoke very well about the difficulties with administering EpiPens. I have a highly allergic, anaphylactic-prone granddaughter. I myself made a judgment to administer an EpiPen to her two Christmases ago. It was a correct judgment. She was indicating, she was 10, so she was very well able to say, yeah. And I had trouble doing it. I had practiced as a director years ago, and periodically practiced. And I had administered an orange a number of times. And administering to a child who is going into shock is a very different experience. And so I'm not so sure the EpiPen is such an efficient delivery system of that particular medication. So I think that needs to be looked at before we're required to have them, let alone the issues of storage, let alone the issues of who's paying for this, keeping up with the expiration dates. So that was what I wanted to say about EpiPens. But mostly what I would like to say is that we want to work with the Department of Health. We want to work with our consultants, with our sanitarians. But we have to know what we're supposed to be doing and how to get there. And if we keep getting new regulations coming down on us, and we don't have time to figure things out, then we'll end up paying fines, as I did, because I had two teachers of an age that previously they were exempt from varicella immunization. And they, their doctors had not updated that, they had current medicals, but they did not have proof of, new proof of varicella immunity. So I got fines. And they're rather burdensome fines, as other people have said. Anything else we haven't budgeted for comes out of something that is, at least indirectly, going to affect the quality of our program for children. It comes from someplace. We are all on bottom-line, break-even budgets. So thank you for your time. I appreciate your thoughtfulness and listening to us, and I'm looking forward to the feedback.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Our next speaker is Denise Cordovano, followed by Ronnie Moskowitz and Marie Paduol.
Hi, Denise Cordovano from Battery Park City Day Nursery. We have a program that has been around for more than 30 years, and serves children ages one through five years old. We have a private program, plus we do have the pre-K for all of the universal pre-K programs too.
And can I ask you to specify, speaking of Article 43?
Article 47.
47, yes.
And much of my notes were covered by other people, so I will try to skip forward. But I think that the Department of Health has wonderful intentions for children, just the same way as anyone that is attending this hearing today. We're not here to, because we don't care. We're here because we do care. And we want what's best for the children. We want best practices. We want the best health. We want the best relationship with the families, and we want a good relationship with the Department of Health. So that is why we are all here. However, there are many things that are logistically very difficult, and perhaps were thought of by people with wonderful intentions, but are not in the trenches with us. It's the generals that send out the privates to do the dirty work, and the privates die in the trenches. And that's what is happening. So some things about the staff training, just briefly, I'd like to say that we do train our league teachers, along with the assistants, even though that hasn't been required. I have a question about, you know, what's next to come down the road with that? Are you going to specify who the trainers are going to be, and what the trainer qualifications are, as what happens in other states? So that one is getting pushed to the side a little bit, but I think needs to be looked at more closely. The tooth brushing, first of all, you have an incomplete sentence on 47.27G6. That does not make sense. So if you could just take another look at that, please. The suggestion about looking at the number of hours per day a child is in a program, that certainly, if you're in a high-needs area where children need a lot of extra care, that's different than a program where children are with us for three to, you know, three and a half hours a day, and don't even eat lunch with us. They come in for a light snack. So that needs to be looked at. The UPK schedule, how to fit it into our day, because we do have very specific minutes that are assigned to different parts. So I'm not even sure what part of the day we're going to be able to squeeze this into the UPK program. It is incomplete thoughts. So for tooth brushing, you're saying that the children need to sit at a table, but yet they use tap water to rinse their brush, so that means they're getting up. Nothing is addressed about the children swallowing the toothpaste or spitting it out. It is definitely not healthy for children to be swallowing toothpaste with fluoride in it. There is nothing to address the size of the amount that children are given, and that's something else that needs to be addressed, too. So if you go forward with this, there are definitely some issues that need to be looked at logistically, and it really needs to be thought out well. Perhaps Department of Health, you know, visiting a program to see this in action, a program that does it already, and see what happens, to make sure that everything can work. Because right now, it is not logistically possible. EpiPens, I don't even want to get started too much on that, just reiterating a lot of what has been said, creating an atmosphere where teachers are diagnosing allergies. Teachers are not doctors. So, you know, the costs associated with them, where to get them, what kind of agreement has been made with the company by the Department of Health that allows us to get these, I don't know. We need retraining in the new interpretation of Article 47. So not just a list of infractions and fees that go along with those immediate infractions, but it is also an interpretation. We need to know what we're looking at, so we're not getting fined unnecessarily. We want to do the right thing. All of these expenses, things such as the Fire Department, Buildings Department not being together, the Fire Department, I may now pay three fees for the Department of Fire Department to visit me. One for my toddler permit, one for a preschool permit, and then who knows why I pay a fee for the UPK program. Why I'm doubled, I don't know. All of these costs, plus our miscellaneous annual increases, minimum wage increase, all of this adds up to costs that are very prohibitive for us to continue programs. What happens is, we have to pass these costs along to parents. Parents in my neighborhood can afford more than parents in some other neighborhoods, and it defeats your intentions of good intentions. And what will happen is, parents will go to unlicensed programs, and they will not benefit from the quality of your, of what you want to have happen. They're just going to go to the grandmothers.
Thank you very much. Ronnie Moskowitz will be followed by Marie, I believe, or Maris Paduol, and then Leslie Capella.
Good morning, I'm Ronnie Moskowitz.
Good morning.
I'm head of Washington Market School. We are a nonprofit early childhood center, serving 343 children in Manhattan. And here, I'm very touched by what some of my colleagues have said to you. We don't often get to speak to each other about the trials and tribulations and the joys of running centers. Many of us have done this, after this 42 years, it's our life's work. And we have appreciated so many individual Department of Health consultants who have helped us along the way. We started, our school started in a neighborhood that was zoned incorrectly. And so it was our Board of Health consultants many years ago who said, go to city planning. And then we had to go to the Department of Transportation, and of course, then we had to go through the renewal process, and then we had to go to the Board of Standards and Appeals. It has gone on and on. And here we are now, and I'm speaking to section 47.47, where we educate, as Pat Pell said, not just children, we educate parents. We help parents be the best parents they can be. But what has happened over the years, with so many changes, our school is seven blocks from World Trade Center. So we have put in tens of thousands of dollars into training for safety. We have had just lockdown drills and bomb scare drills. And how do we work with children and parents, not to make them afraid? We must add high tragedy just once ago. So now what we're looking at... So now what we're looking at is, how do we take our budgets, take our people power, help our parents understand that our visits, both from really wonderful consultants and from fire department and buildings department, have increased our school three times. We have gotten a violation, fair enough. We run it immediately. We work together, but we don't understand violations. We don't understand fees. And I would like to leave you with a question. How we can work together, both your organization in the city, this bureaucracy with fire and buildings? We don't understand the mayor's office, whose board meeting, some contradictory rulings. What are the proper ways to close a door? What are the right blocks? How do we help our children and our parents understand what we do to keep our schools safe? And parents don't understand, if a school has a violation, what does that mean? We're not a restaurant. We have something posted. We haven't done anything to endanger a child. One teacher hadn't gotten an inoculation. But we need for everyone to work together to better help parents, thousands of parents in the city, realize what early childhood stands for. And I know you do. But it's not about just violations. It's about the quality of each of our schools. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to take a short break now. We'll come back in about ten minutes, and we will continue at that point. Our next speakers will be Marie Faduel, Leslie Capello, and Amy Stoney. See you all in ten minutes. Thanks.
I think it's pretty much covered, you know? And it's not like we're going to get any, are they going to give any fees?
They said it, they're going to somehow, we can look at that. Which is nice.
Is that what you were going to ask then? Is that what you were just going to ask?
No, we did not. Okay, we're going to get started. Okay, so our next speaker is Marie Faduel. Is it Marie?
Yeah, I'm Marie Faduel, and I'm representing myself. I've been working since nineteen eighty-seven for ACS Childhood Centers. So they've always been licensed by the Department of Health.
If I could ask you to speak as close to the microphone as possible.
Okay, my name's Marie Faduel.
Wonderful. And also, are you speaking about Article forty-seven?
Forty-seven and forty-three.
And forty-three, okay.
So I've been dealing with the Health Department for over thirty years, and I'm happy to say I rarely get a violation. Rarely, maybe one in thirty years. So the reason I'm here is something I've been advocating for years with the city council, the Health Department, but Department of Education, is that all of you should be on the same page. And every time we meet with the Department of Ed and ACS, Early Learn, we are told that, yes, they're working with the Health Department. But so far, it's been thirty years, and I haven't seen one sign of it. For example, I'm wondering if this tooth brushing thing that is a Head Start requirement is being put into place because the Department of Education is about to take over the ACS Early Learn contracts, and a Head Start requirement is that we do tooth brushing in the classrooms. We can say it's not going to work because it's been working with Head Start. It has been working. But the problem is, in New York City, we have, our daycare centers are much different than the rest, the way they set up than the rest of the country, even the rest of New York State. The other daycare centers in New York State are licensed by OCS, and New York, the five boroughs, are by the Health Department. And I think there's a good reason for that. Our classroom, classrooms, the bathrooms are outside of the classroom. The sinks are outside of the classroom. Now, you're going to have children taking toothbrushes out of the classroom to go rinse them. And then, you know, kids, those toothbrushes are going to be weapons all the way to the bathroom. They're going to be touching each other. Or you're going to train the providers on how to store those toothbrushes? Are they going to be keeping cups? We have a kit that we put the toothbrushes in, and it's liquid, and it's a disinfectant. And each child has their own section. But do other providers know to do that? And who's going to buy that kit? How much is it going to be? It's all about cost. Also, certified teachers being there all day. Universal pre-K, well, according to, from what I know, Article forty-seven, if the certified director is not on site, for example, I'm here, a certified teacher, qualified teacher will be a teacher in charge. With universal pre-K, you cannot pull that certified teacher out of the classroom. I think you know that. That's why I'm saying you should all be on the same page. ACS, Early Learn, they don't want the teachers to have all the kids sitting down at the same time doing the same activity. Or you're going to work with Early Learn so they understand that all those kids have to sit around a table washing their teeth. You need to be on the same page. We're going to be written up by Early Learn staff, soon-to-be DOE staff. Ratio, you have teachers, one teacher walking to a bathroom outside the classroom with six kids, I could picture. And then leaving the other teacher in the classroom with twelve kids. For the Health Department, four-year-olds, one to twelve is okay. For the UPE, it's one to ten. I hope you know that also, for four-year-olds. So now you're out of ratio. So, the ratios don't match DOE. Also, the Health Department is saying teachers, group teachers, should be, can be on a seven-year study plan. DOE is telling us now it's three years. So June thirtieth, a lot of teachers are going to be laid off. The three years are up, they're not certified, they have to go. I hope the city is ready for this mass of teachers being laid off. I'm not sure if the Health Department knows that. You said seven years, DOE says three years. I don't know what Early Learn is, Early Learn is just agrees with DOE right now. So it's confusing. Thank you.
Okay, next is Leslie Capello, followed by Amy Stoney and Sarah Essen. Leslie Capello, she's not here, I'm being told. Okay, we'll move on to Amy Stoney. Amy Stoney. Okay, we'll move on to Sarah Essen, Essen? Sarah Essen? Okay, Varvara Radimushkinah.
Good morning. I'm here, my name is Varvara Radimushkinah. I represent Gold Material Montessori School. We have three locations throughout the city, and each year we serve about a hundred and twenty children. We have children range two to five and two UPK classrooms. I'm here today to talk about Article forty-seven, and specifically about tooth brushing. I appreciate the comments that other people delivered to you about tooth brushing. But I would like to emphasize the practical possibilities of this. I'm not in support for this due to logistics issues and due to also to staff limitations and constraints. Many people talked about child tooth adulteration in the classroom. This is one concern. Another concern, of course, logistics, and actually layout of the classrooms. That many bathrooms are outside of the classroom itself. So it poses the challenges of the teachers as well as children to practice healthy tooth brushing and actually supervise one-to-one tooth brushing. Another concern is, as you know, Montessori, we do care about children. We do have inclusion programs. That means all children come to us with sensory issues, children with on the spectrum, and children with special needs. We call them exceptional children. These children require one-on-one tooth brushing more than two minutes. And actually, the colleagues before told you that estimate is twenty and more. Unfortunately, we cannot take their time out of our classroom programs and just dedicate one staff member to tooth brushing of these kids. I would like to draw your attention on international experience with tooth brushing. And I pulled out some statistics about the tooth brushing practice in dental health and oral health in other countries. The lead countries today are Germany, United Kingdom, Denmark, Luxembourg, and Netherlands. United States stays on tenth place. I have colleagues, I'm in connection with early childhood educators all over the globe, and what I saw from them about tooth brushing practices. They say that all comes from parents, of course, and from universal coverage. That means that children can see the dentists regularly. And I propose a practical amendment to the Article forty-seven to include mandatory annual dental screening for the child to attend daycare. You already have the medical yearly immunization checkup, health checkup for children. Why don't add there the dental health checkup? So in this case, you will mandate the parent to go to the specialist to check the child's teeth, and of course, to get all recommendations or professional recommendations and advices on their child health. Another thing we can do is include a requirement for the preventive screening visits. What we do in our schools, we partner with NYU Dentistry Clinic, pediatric dentistry. They come and they introduce children to their oral hygiene. They talk about, they come with large puppets. It's all fun, interesting. We set up the activities for the children to practice in the classroom, like fake tooth teeth and the tooth brushing. They practice brushing their teeth, and they love to do it. They come home and they share their thoughts about this with parents and families. Another thing we can do is to set up public campaign and free parenting classes to meet the parents' needs if they need to understand more. But educators, qualified educators, it's all training on us and responsibilities. I think this needs to be the parent responsibility. In another, I brought a copy for you, is another research. It's public access research, behavioral determinants of brushing young children's teeth, implication for anticipatory guidance. Here you can see, this research was conducted among families, and they found that inclination to twice-a-day tooth brushing versus less often, it depends, or more likely to describe specific skills to overcome barriers of parents. And some parents hold false benefits about the benefits of twice-day tooth brushing, report little normative pressure or social support for the behavior. So it comes about social, about your community, about teaching our parents how to do parenting, because many parents do not know that. I got many questions about dieting, about tooth brushing, about food, even about bottle feeding. A lot. And I'm happy to talk to players and to educate them with all these issues. Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next speaker is Nicole Adams, followed by Ellen Offen and Meredith Gary. So Nicole Adams, are you here? Great.
Good afternoon, now, I believe. My name is Nicole Adams. I'm an administrator at the First Presbyterian Church Nursery School, which is in the Village. And I am, in an effort of time, not to reiterate what a lot of previous speakers have said, will approach my concerns about Article forty-seven from a slightly different standpoint. I live in the South Bronx, which is one of the poorest counties in this country. And in this city, I work in one of the most affluent parts of this city. The trio of ladies from St. Barnabas, which is kind of near my hood, but not really, spoke about the preponderance of issues that they've noticed, and they're speaking about it with respect to families from low-income neighborhoods. The Department of Health, which I'm sure you all know, I don't know if the audience is aware, few years ago, put together amazing community health profiles, where every neighborhood in New York City was evaluated in different areas. Quality of life, like expectancy, educational attainment, economic levels, so on and so forth. Each community health profile shows that there is a difference between neighborhoods and between boroughs. Resultantly, there is going to be a difference in the challenges, needs, and issues faced by people who populate those areas. It seems as if these amendments are trying to address issues in a blanket approach as opposed to customizing what we're asking for, what we're mandating to specific communities.
Excuse me, may I ask, are you speaking about Article forty-three, forty-seven?
Yes.
Thank you.
However, I believe it applies to forty-three as well. Forty-three does not, my program is not regulated by forty-three or regulated by forty-seven. However, I know there are similarities. So tooth brushing to address common childhood illnesses, to try to meet the needs of those children who may not see their primary care physician annually, that's something, yes, in the South Bronx, they need that. In the Village, we don't really need that. However, rather than taking a customized approach to supporting children and families in specific areas... However, um, rather than taking a customized approach to supporting children and families in specific areas, it appears you all are just trying to blanket the approach, and then we're left to try to figure out how to make it work. Um, the other part of that is, in these underserved areas, there are resources in place to support these efforts. In the Village, we don't have such efforts. Uh, one of the programs I looked into recently for, for our program was, um, and I forget the exact name of it. It's a reimbursement program for, um, healthy eating, if we want to implement healthy eating, and the school is, uh, through New York State. Most of the money which will be refunded to our program is for those programs where children would qualify for free or reduced meals. Most of our population would not qualify for that. For students who qualify for free or reduced meals, you're reimbursed, I think it's eighty-three cents for every dollar you spend. If you have children who don't meet that, uh, economic burden, or who don't have that economic burden, you're reimbursed seven cents. So, that's just one example of, a program is put in place to address specific needs and challenges for a certain population of students, but there's also support from an agency, in this case, a state agency, to allow programs to do that. Smaller programs, nonprofit programs, we need the same support. Just because we charge tuition does not mean that we have the money to enact a lot of these regulations that are being proposed. Um, to that end, what I would suggest, or what I would hope, is to truly address needs of communities, of children and families. Look at those specific needs in those specific areas and address that. Don't create issues, problems, and needs where there really isn't one. Um, this is not for a lack of concern for children, this is not for a lack of wanting to support parents. Again, someone said earlier, that's why we're all here. Um, but let's really take a, a true look at it, rather than trying to apply a blanket solution and leaving folks to figure it all out in the end. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next speaker is Ellen Offen, followed by Meredith Gary and Lois Lee. So Ellen Offen, are you here? Ellen Offen? Okay, we'll move on to Meredith Gary. Meredith Gary?
Okay.
Lois Lee?
Hi, I'm, and my name is Lois Lee, I will be addressing Article forty-seven. And I represent Chinese American Planning Council, we have six, um, early childhood centers, and also six after-school programs. But I'm also Vice President of the Council of School Administrators, and that's CSA, and also the school principals. So I spoke to school principals about this issue, and also about, from the CBO community, the community-based organizations. So on the first issue of the EpiPen auto-injectors, I'm just going to, we wanna go on record, so that's why it may be repetitive. Uh, what were the costs for the childcare providers? Where can we purchase, or will DOH, MH make it available? Where and how can we purchase? Will DOE or ACS funds, um, for the cost of the two EpiPens? Will this impact our insurance premiums, since we are now going to administer medication, and we not certified to administer medication? Uh, will DOH waiver that need to be, uh, to be administration, you know, MAT, um, training? Will we need to, um, train now the people who don't have the MATT training? Will they be trained to ensure proper protocol with the storage and administration of their medication? Once the EpiPen is administered, the child will need to be taken to the ER, encouraged becomes an issue. Our, our insurance will have to reflect that we are protective should something happen medically once the administration, the medication is administered by a non-medical staff. Currently, public and public schools have a nurse on staff. Will CBOs also be getting funds to meet this new mandate to hire a school nurse? And that's, you know, I'm just taking, you know, uh, I tried to combine all the issues that everyone is emailing me to say on their behalf. Uh, tooth brushing, tooth brushing, the regulation will be enforced for pre-K in public schools and in community-based organizations. In speaking to the principals, uh, they find that it would be an unfair burden for the teachers and the parents. They don't know how the UFT will respond to this, since I am CSA and not UFT. It will take away from instructional time, and for CBOs, it will take additional staff. We are only funded through the DOE for a teacher and assistant teacher, not for a teacher A. So, but we find that a third person, a teacher A, would be necessary to supervise the tooth brushing, and it's not in our pre-K budget. When you look at the comments online about this issue, we see, find that everyone who's a dentist or a hygienist, they all say, oh, this is a great idea. But when you look at the comments, um, by educators, this is not a good idea. And, um, it's not the cost, but it has to do with parent education, and everyone has been saying that, you know, when the children come into my school, I'm the director of early childhood program, and they say to me, Mrs. Lee, look at my shiny white teeth. Because they're telling me that we brush our teeth before we came, and then that was part of parent education. And then at the end of the day, is that we enable the parents and the children to go home and brush their teeth at night. So that's why they're so proud that they have shiny white teeth, and I didn't have to say, I have to put my sunglasses on, because it's so shiny. And so, uh, I really think that it's a good idea to brush teeth, but it is a parent responsibility. Don't over-regulate, you know, what parent responsibility should be. And then, uh, we wanted to address other changes to the health code, like the enhanced, uh, staff training. Um, it's supposed to be for instructional staff, but then, uh, my kitchen helper, my custodian, other people take the training, because I wanted everyone to be on the same page. But we find that with the volunteers, I could not do that, because I have a, an agreement with the St. John's University Academic Service Learning, and they come in for six hours and that's it, they finish their service learning. So those people, I took away from staff training, because I understand the need for staff training. I agree with everyone to say that we need to be retrained in Article forty-seven, forty-three, and every other article. I have done so many workshops for DOH, I've been asked to do dry, I do repace, I do, uh, you know, I am a workshop trainer, and I have my SAC potential also to be a trainer, and I was also a CBA trainer. So I, I can see all the regulations coming down, and we do need clarification, because it keeps changing. Um, you know, whether it is the staff health forms, the TP testing, the, uh, the, on your listing today with seventy-five different items, and I didn't have the time to go through each one. But the, the certified teacher one that Marifa Do brought up is, is important for us too, because I'm here, but, you know, my certified teacher cannot be pulled out. But they are qualified and clear staff. So qualified does not necessarily mean certified, because my other people in the three years, they're not certified teachers, but they're qualified teachers. So why can't they close up the end of the day? Why do we need to have that certified person when we're needed in so many different areas? So, thank you very much, and I think I got, thank you very much for your time.
Okay, our next two speakers are Arlene Fernandez and Maureen King. So, Arlene Fernandez, are you here?
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Oliver Fernandez, I had owned a daycare center in Brooklyn. It was Montgomery Academy. I had to close it because my renewal did not come in on time. My funding was cut, and I no longer had the daycare center. I now have, uh, well, we already had a great school, so we recently got, um, certified under Article forty-three. My concern is the Bureau's, um, interchanging use of certified and qualified. I'm also a doctoral student at St. John's University, and I'm writing my dissertation on quality childcare. And I'm finding a very, I'm finding it very difficult to find information on what the Bureau really considers quality, and what are they judging these programs by. Early learn has a standard, they use the ECOS, they use the class, so they have documentation of what quality is for them. Um, Head Start, I think, get to have their rating system on what quality is. And I'm finding it very difficult for private childcare and other childcare centers to really understand what quality is. We all believe in children having quality education and having qualified educational teachers. But the problem here is that in some community, we do have teachers that might not be certified, but qualified in the sense that they came from the Caribbean, because I'm from a Caribbean background and Caribbean neighborhood, and they have qualifications from their country. But when they come here and we hire them, we find that the Bureau does not accept their qualification. I really believe that children who are, especially in my community, when I have my teachers who are from the same background and culture as the students attending the school, they're better able to do the job. As opposed to someone coming from another culture with the qualification coming into my program, and I am not getting what I'm paying for. And these are teachers that we really cannot afford. We are battling with charter schools, early learn programs for certified teachers. I had one of my friends who owned her childcare center, and she came to me and said, I have twenty-five students, I was told I would be closed down in X time if I don't get a certified teacher as my director. The person she, who came in asked for thirty, not thirty, eighty thousand dollars a year. With twenty-five students in a school, it's almost impossible. So we really need to look at our programs, we really need to look at the needs of the programs, where they are, whether the parents can afford to pay for what we are asking for, and really look at the general quality. Because if you have an educational director that can do the job and can train, I think that too, we need to look at professional development as opposed to a study plan. Because sometimes they have the qualification and they're unable to really do anything in the classroom, as if you, as opposed to if you give them, uh, professional development to help them in the, in the areas they need to, um, upgrade. Another thing, my final thought is that I find that programs are responsible for infractions by teachers. And these teachers leave the programs, go to other programs, and the daycare is responsible for what they've done. I think we need to make teachers responsible for what they do. You left a child in the park, the program has to be closed. It should go against your name, that if someone else has to hire you, it is there against your name. We don't know why they do what they do, we hire them with all good intentions, and it turns out that sometimes they're not good to the program. So I'd like to thank you for your time and for having me here.
Thank you very, very much. Okay, our next speaker is Maureen King.
Pleasant good afternoon. My name is Maureen King, and I am the Executive Director for Traditional Educational Center. We have two centers, we have been in business for over thirty years. I wanna thank the Department of Health for this hearing today. I think it's wonderful, and I am covering Article forty-seven. I wanna talk a bit on the tooth brushing for children. I see that as a big burden on a program. Because we have tried it, and we saw some of the things that really has to be worked out. And it is really hard, I, I, I think that it's really hard for programs to, um, do tooth brushing. The regulation states that we must have two staff persons in the classroom. They just said that we must have two persons in the classroom at all times. So normally, at lunchtime, we have to have another staff person in when staff is going on lunch. That is a heavy cost on a program. A program just had to end up really, um, hiring new staff to, um, come in. And so for any program to effectively and efficiently carry out this requirement, we have to hire additional staff. If we, I see if we really have to execute the tooth brushing properly, we will definitely have to hire new staff in order to, to do that. So my question is, who will be, um, my question is, are we going to get paid for, um, more per child? And who is going to give programs the funding? I know that Head Start has somewhat of a model, but they do give the funding for that, and parents are also involved. We have parents who have to go to work. And we also have teachers who are in the classroom who are really burdened with a lot of paperwork, because it seems as though now it's more paperwork than teachers really teaching the children. Um, what would happen to smaller centers who are already struggling to pay a light bill, a gas bill, and their teachers? How are we going to reevaluate the needs of all centers who are daily providing quality care, um, for our children? We cannot be doctors, nurses, lawyers, and at the same time be educators and give that quality education that our children so need. Given a child, the EpiPen should not be placed on any program unless there is a nurse on site. There are many different requirements in order to administer the medication, and it should not be a mandate on any center. I think it is not fair. The Bureau has to think of the programs more as if we are in a collaboration. Programs are feeling like they are under attack, not only by the Department of Health, the Department of Buildings, the Fire Department. Program administrators spend more time going to old hearings. We used to have, um, consultants who, who came into centers, or who come into centers, and we worked together in the earlier years. You know, so if there is something, those persons come in, we work to fix it. And I can give you a scenario, I even had to laugh with the sanitary, and I said, you know, this is really a joke. It worked just now, and as soon as you walked in the door, there goes the fire interior alarm system. It was on red, not on green. You know, so there is a violation. I think that we need to be able to work together. So, and, and, and as I say, administrators spend more time going to old hearing, which take, which takes away valuable time from running, from the running of the programs. So I would like to ask the Bureau to revisit some of their new regulations, and to let us have a collegial meeting, so that we can really trash out what works for you and what works for us. Because we are the ones who are on the battlefield every day, doing this work for the better good of the families that we serve and the children that we serve in the communities that we serve. Thanks.
Thank you very much for your comments. Uh, we've had a lot of thoughtful comments, I think we've got a, uh, taken comments from everybody who signed up to speak, but is there anybody here that we've missed? Anybody else who signed up who hasn't yet had an opportunity? Okay, I'm gonna close the hearing at this point, but we're gonna, we're gonna stay. I know there are people who may still be watching in other rooms. If there's anybody in another room who signed up to speak, hasn't yet had the opportunity, um, we'll be here for the next ten minutes, come to room eight twenty-five. Uh, other than that, the record of this hearing is now closed. Thank you all very, very much. Your time.